...developments will impact their communities and make sure mitigations meet their needs.
And finally, in the little time we have left, I have to ask you to use the phrase "traffic utopia" in the council meeting. What did you mean by that? Describe it.
Well, I think the traffic utopia that Mr. Garcetti and I had that exchange about was the fact that we gather all of the stakeholders and everyone in the room, that we consider not only just those things that people assume that can be done about traffic, but we open ourselves to new ideas which will include transit, we include pedestrians, we include bikers, we include other forms of, other modes of transportation, other than cars, in order to get around, and parking, land use development, because planning will become a part of that. So, a utopia indicates that you use the best of all your resources. And that's the kind of utopia I'd like to create within the Bureau and within the Department of Transportation, is for us to have more people engaged in the conversation of how we solve this problem. Not that we can't do it, but it will take a lot of courage. As I said in the confirmation, it would take a lot of courage. We have to put our fear to the side, acknowledge it, answer it, and then we have to act on our dream. Because I don't think it's totally a nightmare. I think that there are nightmares out there, but I think nightmares can be put aside to some extent, and I think there are people in this city who will see the dream come true.
Freshly minted, no longer interim general manager of the Department of Transportation, Rita Robinson, we're delighted to have you here on Council Week in Review.
Oh, well, I really appreciate it. And I just want to take just one second just to thank the many numbers of the community and the many employees of the City of Los Angeles who have enabled me to be here. You don't do these jobs by yourself, and there have just been an incredible number of city employees and members of the public who have been so supportive, as well as the mayor and the council. So, I'd just like to take just a second to tell you I sincerely appreciate all of you helping me to do this job.
And we'd like to once again congratulate both David Nahai and Rita Robinson on their confirmations as general managers for the City of Los Angeles, and of course, wish them much success in making Los Angeles a better place in which to work and live. Watch Council Week in Review for highlights of the week's council meetings, and listen for item numbers associated with those discussions you have an interest in. Then go to the world wide web and listen to those discussions in their entirety, using the new City of Los Angeles video-on-demand feature. Visit the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions on the screen. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending December 7th, 2007. On behalf of Camila Chilcot and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Bulky item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Illegal dumping? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power wants to help you become more water-wise. Want to save money? Just look outside. As much as 50% of a home's water use occurs outdoors. Apply the amount of water your plants need. Adjust your sprinkler schedule seasonally. For more tips, log on to bewaterwise.com, or call 1-800-GREEN-LA. We can all make water conservation a way of life. The LADWP, we're working for LA.
My mom kept telling my dad to clear the brush from around our house, because it was a fire hazard, and clearing it could save our house someday. My dad kept saying he would do it someday, someday, someday. Then someday came, and it was too late, too late, too late. Don't wait until it's too late. Clear the brush now.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.[300.02]
If you could ask Mr. Alacon, Ms. Hahn, and Ms. Perry, and Mr. Wesson to please make their way down to the City Council chambers. Thank you, Ms. Perry. We now have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Vice, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you very much. If we could, today is Tuesday. Do we do the...
First work of business would be approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes. I have Mr. Rosenthal will move, Mr. Smith will second.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
And this is Tuesday, there is a flag salute for today.
Yes. If I could ask, Mr. Weezer, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today. If I could ask everyone to please rise.
Put your hand up your heart, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could, we do have a special presentation in a moment, but if, Mr. Clerk, if we could please go through the agenda.
On the regular agenda, items one through eleven are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. Council should have twelve members. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, we will hold those on the desk.
Items twelve through eighteen are also street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. The recommendation for council action is to continue the hearing and ordinances to January eighth.
That will be the order on twelve through eighteen. Are there any special items on twelve through eighteen? If not, those will be held over. Next items.
Items nineteen through twenty-eight are items for which public hearings have been held, and a substitute ordinance is in the works on item nineteen. Do you wish to hold that?
We will hold that. I know there is also a change, just a one change to the Budget and Finance Committee report, so we will hold item nineteen on the desk.
Discuss it as a special.
You want to call it as a special item?
Yeah, a special, yeah.
It will be called special. And item, no, on the next items, please go ahead.
That leaves council twenty through twenty-eight.
Twenty through twenty-eight. Do we have any specials, colleagues, in items twenty through twenty-eight? I do know that we'd like to remove both, move both reports on item twenty-eight. If there's no specials, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten eyes.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President, if we can move twenty-seven forthwith.
Twenty-seven will move forthwith. Next items.
Items twenty-nine through thirty-nine are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration. Item twenty-nine is confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We will hold item twenty-nine on the desk.
And thirty is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that for twelve?
We will hold that for twelve members, and I know on item number thirty-eight, we're going to hold that on the desk for the moment. Mr. Labange.
Thirty-seven for Ms. Hahn, very special.
Thirty-seven for Ms. Hahn.
And there are cards on item thirty-three.
Okay, and thirty-three will also be held on the desk, I mean, as special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten eyes.
Those items will be approved. Next items.
On the supplemental agenda, item forty is an item for which public hearing has not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
We have item forty before us. We're going to continue that item, actually move that to the Rules and Government Committee. So that'll be moved back to committee, or moved to committee, I guess, is the case. Okay. It'll be continued to Friday.
Continued to Friday, and the interim referred to Rules and Government.
Correct. Thank you. Next item.
That would take you back to the items called special or the presentation.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Weezer for a very, very special presentation. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and councilmembers in public. It's my pleasure to be here today with the head of state of Mexico City, the Honorable Marcelo Ebrard. As you know, we have had a sister city relationship with the city of Mexico City for, since 1969. And just yesterday, the mayor, Antonio Villarreal, along with the head of state for Mexico City, signed a recommitment to continue the relationship that we have with Mexico City. It is the second, Mr. Tom Labange will correct me of that, our second sister city ever signed?
No, no, it's one of the, it's a little down the line there, but it's our first in our hearts, Jose.
First in our hearts, but it's a little down the line?
Good job.
But it is the first for Mexico City, correct? It's the first for Mexico City. And as you look forward, as you think about the issues facing Los Angeles and the issues facing Mexico City, two of the largest metropolitan areas in the world, the issues are the same, whether it's transportation, public safety, education, global warming. These are some very similar issues that we all are trying to tackle. And with Mr. Ebrard, he's been there just a few years, and we've seen a lot accomplished in the great city of Mexico City. For example, he has tackled issues of public safety, reducing crime significantly. He's addressing public transportation, encouraging more people to use bicycles, to lessen the gridlock that Mexico City has been known for. And he has also been a leader in Mexico, in all of Mexico, of addressing the issue of global warming. So as we move forward in addressing both issues that affect Mexico City and affect Los Angeles, this sister city relationship we have is even more important. We often talk about as well that outside of Mexico, Los Angeles City has the highest number of Mexicans, even compared to any other city in Mexico. But what's often not mentioned is that when you think about Americans living abroad, perhaps Mexico City has the most Americans living abroad than any other city in the world. So as you can see, the future of Mexico City and the future of Los Angeles is intertwined. So we welcome Mr. Ebrard, we thank him for his stay here, for the sharing of ideas, and to move forward to create a better relationship between the two cities. And before we hear from Mr. Ebrard, I'd like to introduce to you the biggest cheerleader for the city of Los Angeles, and also the chairman of the Sister Cities Program, our councilmember, Tom Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer, thank you. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Mayor, I think what we said before, and many times mayors from other great cities have come to speak to this council, and it is about cities. It is about cities where the people now live. Over, well over fifty percent of the world's population plus lives in cities, in urban areas. And Mexico City is a great city. I've visited. I love your zoo, which is so important because the children have a relationship with something that they don't get in an urban area. But I wanted to welcome you here, and in my district is the Hollywood sign. Below the Hollywood sign is a monastery. In the monastery are nuns. They call them sisters, right? The good sisters up at the monastery make the greatest bread in the world. And I want you to take this back to Mexico City, this loaf of pumpkin bread from the monastery of the angels, because today, Mayor, you're an angel in the city of angels. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes for a few remarks as well.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and also welcome the great mayor from Mexico City. I was just sharing with him earlier that my uncle, my tio Juan, still lives in the St. Giro, in the Colonia Montesuma. And it's a tough neighborhood, but it's a neighborhood that I see my grandparents grow up in, my other cousins. And as we were speaking to the issues, I understand what challenges are before Mexico City, and I would love to welcome his team, whether dealing with public safety, gang intervention, or educational development, issues with greening. A riverway is being addressed at this moment, and love to have a team to work and share notes, because what is astounding about Los Angeles is that we have umbilical cord to almost every major city, major country in the world. As an international city, we have untapped potential to leverage these kinds of experiences and share policies and strategies that could hopefully create relief from those plagues that affect our cities, like the gangs that are now international in nature, the drug trade, things that really hurt our families. So I welcome to work with you in the future, and thank you, Councilmember Weezer, and the mayor, for allowing us to have this opportunity to have this dialogue. Hope you had a great time in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to add your welcome for the entire City Council, and as I mentioned earlier, your calendar during the last, I've talked to numerous people who've gone to events to support the mayor and to meet you, and when you described that there's over nine million and then thirteen million that are in the city every single day, those are some big challenges, and we look forward to working with you. Yes, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Madam President. And before we hear from our esteemed visitor, I also wanted to introduce to, well, actually, there's a number of people visiting along with the mayor, with the head of state of Mexico City, but I do want to introduce El Diputado Martín Olavar Meta, presidente del Comité de Asuntos Internacionales de la Asamblea Legislativa. Welcome. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí también. Gracias. Also with us is El Diputado Xiu Tenorio. Bienvenido. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí. Gracias. So as we move forward, we also wanted to mention that our two economies depend quite a bit on tourism, and my good friend, Tom Labange, reminded me of L.A. Inc. and the important work that we're all doing to promote tourism on both areas. And as Mr. Ebrard mentioned, they actually opened a office for Mexico City here in the metropolitan area of the city of Los Angeles, to not only promote tourism, but to help the nationals who are here, living, many of them in the larger metropolitan area of Los Angeles. So ladies and gentlemen, please help me in welcoming the head of state for the federal district of Mexico, Mr. Ebrard.
Thank you very much. Madam President, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, in the name of Mexico City, for your warm reception today. We want to really improve the relationship between Mexico City and L.A., and California as a whole. And the reason is, we share with you several important things. First of all, the second-largest Mexican community on the world, all over the world, in L.A. Secondly, about the future, we have common interests in the global climate change process. We are interested also about your improvements in safety issues, and in public transportation facilities, and mainly in educational reform, because we are working in the same field. So we are very interested in to really have with L.A. a close relationship, a new process between our cities. That's why we are here, closest one, productive one, in common concerns about our future. So we are working very hard in improving our safety situation in the city. We are reforming our educational system. We are working very hard with young people along the city. We are improving our programs. We are working with something like two hundred thousand young people in the city right now in order to improve our, you know, our social climate, our relationship with others, our human development each day. So thank you very much for your time, and we really appreciate the support that we had received from this council, and from the people of Los Angeles, and the mayor of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, and we are going to be very close to you in the next months and years. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much.
Madam President and members, and I'd like to ask your deputy of tourism, Ms. Alexandria Barras, to join us if you would. She had a great meeting with L.A. Inc. yesterday, and the nexus between us and tourism, and we wanted to let you know, Mr. Weezer, you want a special, where is this special gift going to be placed? So you know, we have this gift for you, and it's right here, to let people of Los Angeles know how close Mexico City is to Los Angeles.
I told you before, remember.
I know, I know, thank you. And Jose, tell them they're going to put it on our website.
We were told this is going to be placed on Alvera Street, so one of our biggest destinations here in Los Angeles in terms of tourism. They'll know how far away, or how close Mexico City is to the city of Los Angeles.
All right, good job. We got a good picture. Okay, right here, we got a good picture.
Thank you.
Boom, boom, boom. One second. Cherry, here, look at Cherry, right there. Right there, okay. Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and enjoy your stay. Happy holidays, and glad to see your family, part of it lives here in the Los Angeles region. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Yes, Madam President, there are twelve members. Do you wish to take up the ordinances?
We will take up those ordinances.
And that would be items one through eleven, nineteen, and thirty. And on nineteen, the substitute ordinance has been circulated, and there is one technical amendment to the Budget and Finance Committee report to have the city clerk report back as opposed to GSD.
Thank you. With that amendment, we're ready to move on those items at consent. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. Those items have been approved. Mr. Reese?
Madam President, item nineteen, Peturo Canyon, forthwith.
Forthwith. We will have that go forthwith. Yes. And number thirty will also go forthwith as well. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Madam President, do you wish to take up the commission appointment?
Yes, we will take up the commission appointment. We may wait just a few minutes, as I think we see the group of individuals leaving the council chambers, but if we can move ahead, Ms. Reese.
And this would be item twenty-nine, which is the appointment of Mr. Timothy Martella to the O Pueblo de Los Angeles Historical Monument Authority.
Welcome, Mr. Labange.
Yes, Mr. Martella is going to be a great addition. He was with us this morning over on Alvera Street at the wonderful reception we had for the mayor of Mexico City, but also he lives right in the heart of the city, in the Silverlake District, and he has a strong care and concern to help promote Alvera Street the historic destination it is the birthplace of Los Angeles. I ask for an eye vote of this wonderful nominee, soon-to-be commissioner, on behalf of Mayor Villarreal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. We will give you this opportunity, if you'd like to say a few words before, hopefully will be a unanimous vote by the City Council.
Well, I thank you for all your consideration, and I will give it my best shot to assist O Pueblo in moving along, and hoping get the Ciceros mural going, and the Italian Hall reopened, and all the other various projects that are down there.
Thank you, and it's a wonderful destination point, I know, not only for visitors, but for those of us that live in Los Angeles, to enjoy the rich history that we have there at Alvera Street. And with that, Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. You've been approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Yes, we'll take up public comment at this time. Merv Evans, followed by Michael Carrion, followed by Michael Hunt, and then we will go out to the San Fernando Valley. Mr. Evans.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I want to say thank you for the outstanding leadership the council brings. Never before has the challenge been greater. We have an opportunity at the federal level to pass the Dream Act and allow a number of undocumented young people an opportunity for the path to citizenship. I truly would encourage this council to demand that the federal government move Senator Hatch's Dream Act and allow these young people who are not in jail, not selling dope, not causing a problem, an opportunity to become productive U.S. citizens. Now let me refer to an item today in the Long Beach Press Telegram Trash Rag on their editorial page, in which it claims that I'm asking for a sales tax enhancement of one and a half percent to make our colleges free, and they're criticizing me for that. There is no better investment in America's future than a well-educated population. I stand by my position urging the governor for a one and a half cent sales tax to buy out the student contribution and make our colleges free. The best weapon of the future is not a jet plane, or a new bomb, or anything else. The best weapon of the future is a well-educated population. So today is Election Day in the Fifty-Fifth Assembly District. I hope all our good voters do the right thing, and I hope to join the state legislature in a short time, and I hope to work with you in the future. Thank you. Merv Evans.
Michael Carrion.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. I'm from the Fourteenth District. Yesterday afternoon, I contacted Parks, Labange, Grul, Wesson, Rosenthal's, and Alacon's offices regarding the lack of enforcement by parking enforcement. I only got two calls back. That was Parks' office, and Mr. Labange's office was busy, gave me a minute, hello, goodbye, thank you, I don't have time for you. It's funny when you call your elected representatives, and they don't have time to listen to the issues. You come here to City Hall, and their conversations are more important than the issues we bring. We bring these issues because nobody listens. So therefore, I don't want to speak to you guys no more. I'd like to speak to the public. When you go to the polls, listen to the people who are listening to us. Vote. If you don't vote, then you're going to have incompetent people in office. Only a handful of people will vote for them. This is not, the city of Los Angeles is putting the burden of parking enforcement on the taxpayers of Los Angeles. Employees that take out e-vehicles do not get cited. If they do, it's a very, very small percentage. I myself received a parking ticket for parked outside of the white line by that much. But the vehicle behind me was an L.A. Pete police officer who walked into a tobacco shop and parked in the red. He was not cited because the officer felt that that might have been an emergency. Los Angeles police officer's tobacco nicotine addiction was more important, so therefore he was not cited. I ask this council to call Jimmy Price and Rudy Carrasco, Deputy Chief of Parking Enforcement, or as I call them, metermates, and let them know about this corruption. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Hunt.
First of all, I'd like to thank Janice Hahn for being a soldier in this war. And to the Eleventh District, it's sad. It's sad what you've got going on, it's sad that you're not doing nothing about it, and it's sad that you're not working with the people hands-on. And to Mr. Zine, if you ever, ever want to come up against me in any political...
Excuse me, the speaker should be speaking about the council members in the third person and not directly to them.
Just like he addressed me Friday. He addressed me Friday, so I'm addressing him back. You got that? Or are you a racist?
Not the race card.
Please, please continue. He did not call you by name.
Because he addressed me Friday after I got off to the public thing. He addressed me, so I'm addressing you now. Anytime, Zine, anyplace. What you guys doing?
Sir, sir, you cannot, you're disrupting our meeting. Threat, by threatening, by threatening our, yes.
Debate with Zine about what he addressed to me on Friday. That is not disruptive. That was part of the meeting. If he wants to go into a debate with me, anytime, anyplace. What you guys doing is wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong. I'm, you know, I don't want to be here. Bill can't handle his business. It's, it's...
Yes, you, you cannot. We've warned you, we've warned you twice.
Just for clarification, though, he can refer to the individual council members in the third person, but he cannot be speaking to you directly.
Take care of your business, that's all I'm saying. Just take care of your business.
Thank you. Our next speakers are from the San Fernando Valley. Donna Perman, followed by Miriam Vogler.
Okay. Donna Perman, first I forgot to wish council members a happy Hanukkah. I meant to say it on Friday. So happy Hanukkah to them, and to channel thirty-five viewers, and I love seeing council members on Hanukkah festivities. Though I was brought up a Christian, my mother was Jewish, and my grandmother lit a stabbing candles. It was a thrill to finally meet Council President Eric Garcetti in his handsome pinstripe suit. Appeared very happy and jovial, seen the brighten up the room. Also met Councilman Richard Alacon for the first time, and opened up the door for Councilman Tom Labange. Miss Councilman Rosenthal, I hope Jan Perry is feeling, Councilman, Lady Jan Perry is feeling well. I am impressed on how the City Council cares about ecology, how you helped displaced renters get a fair share from the developer, never backed down from doing the right and fair thing. Though the paper centered on sweet Councilman Rosenthal, I'm in your corner, it was the whole City Council who approved, and should be thanked as a whole. So it seems confusing when you approve Grand Avenue projects, huge Hollywood projects, apartments that look like prisons. I wish you would see the lies from the CRA and stop taking money from developers to fund your reelections. Our city is in deep trouble, yet you seem to spend it though you had a bottomless revenue of money, all raising different fees and asking for cutbacks from together. Do we have a deficit or not? It doesn't seem so when you approve so many fee waivers and approve huge lawsuits. Homeless people have to eat dog food. Should they get a huge amount of money from you two? Top it off, City Council takes a big raise, except three to five council members, two giving it to charity. Does it really mean the council members who refuse to get less money than the ones that approve it? If it is, I thank the council members that refused the raise, though I find it hard to believe that the members get less. Is it really just a pretend thing? You get the raise though some didn't agree? I'm not sure. Our city is falling apart, our roads are being, aren't being fixed, they just tear up streets and put up acclosures for weeks to cause traffic buildup. Our nice, our lead sign is ruined by taggers, and buildings laid vacant for months on end. It looks bad, it's dangerous, too. Our city really needs help, though I would not take it from our hard-working city employees. We should take it, we need more police and firefighters, we should take it from the CRA.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Perman. Miriam Vogler is our next speaker. Ms. Vogler.
The city charter should be specifically saying that the CRA should be putting the money back into the city and not taking it for themselves. And the developers, the Grand Avenue project is nothing but a scam, and it's a rip-off to the taxpayers here, who you're asking to pass a telephone tax. I mean, I have nothing, you guys are wonderful. I let all you want, you people are wonderful. But when you're talking about city business, I mean, and this is a city taxpayer, you can't treat this as a business. It's supposed to be, the taxpayer paying for everything here, our podium, we're paying for everything here, and you can't just let it slide. So that's what I'm saying, the CRA has to be committed to put the monies back into the city, and the city should have that money in the general fund. Those one billion dollars that you get from property taxes should be earmarked back into the general fund and pay for the essential services, the police, fire, and paramedics. That's why we don't want no more trash fees, we don't want no telephone tax, no property tax, parcel tax passed on to us for transportation. This is, these are essential services that are supposed to be paid by the money that is collected. Yesterday was the last day to pay your property taxes, folks. Landlords alike, the tenants also pay property taxes in their rents. So if you think of passing bonds and property taxes, don't get you, don't get me wrong now, because I'm telling you right now, you're raising your own, your own rents by adding more taxes to your landlord. So do not pass no bonds, no property taxes, no property parcel taxes, no bonds, especially in, now, the telephone thing is, the internet thing is a problem, and I can't...
The Grand Avenue project is nothing but a scam, and it's a rip-off to the taxpayers here, who you're asking to pass a telephone task? I mean, I have nothing... You guys are wonderful. I let all you want, you people are wonderful. But when you talk about city business, I mean, and this is a city taxpayer, you can't treat this as a business. It's supposed to be the taxpayer paying for everything here, our podium, we're paying for everything here, and you can't just let it slide. So that's what I'm saying. The CRA has to be committed to put the monies back into the city, and the city should have that money in the general fund. Those $1 billion that you get from property taxes should be earmarked back into the general fund and paid for the essential services of police, fire, and paramedics. That's why we don't want no more trash fees, we don't want no telephone tax, no property tax, parcel tax passed on to us for transportation. These are essential services that are supposed to be paid by the money that is collected. Yesterday was the last day to pay your property taxes, folks. Landlords alike, and tenants also pay property taxes in their rents. So if you think of passing bonds and property taxes, don't get me wrong, Nick, and I'm telling you right now, you're raising your own rents by adding more taxes to your landlord. So do not pass no bonds, no property taxes, no property parcel taxes, no bonds, especially in... Now, the telephone thing is, the internet thing is a problem, and I cannot back it. You have to specifically say it in your booklet that you cannot put this on the internet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, excuse public comment, I apologize. I was moving on to the next one, which is 33. Item 33, which both Miriam Fogler and Donna Perman have filled out cards, so we'll go back to Van Nuys.
Well, I'm talking about 33 and 34, because they're all, again, part of the general fund that you say... I like the itemization of where you're getting the... An audit, where is this money coming from, the special event fees? I want to know why there's no motorium on it, and I know you're already voting yes on it, because I could tell by the way you're acting, Wendy. You know, I hope the rest of the members don't act the same way. I hope you vote no on it. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Perman.
I can't believe all these water and power increases. City and federal employees only get a 3% to 4%, yet our increases, I saw it was 3% every year. That goes our money to DWP. Oh, is this special events? Oh, okay. So, why do we have... Sorry. Why do we have so many holiday events paid by our city? Feast of Lady Guadalupe, cultural event, 13,000. Echo Park Holiday Parade, 3,9695. Holiday Open House, 1,642. St. Elizabeth, Guadalupe Parade, 1,800. Winter Wonderland and Toy Giveaway, 4,000. Chatsworth Holiday Parade, 6,000. Eagle Rock Tree Lighting, 1,651. Second Annual Weisar Winter Wonderland... Ooh, does that mean it's really cute like Elton Man? Anyway, it's 5,000. And San Fernando Valley Toy Giveaway, 3,683. And Virgin Guadalupe Possession, 2,920. For every 10 Christmas events, you get one Jewish. I'm not against holiday events, though I feel it's overwhelmed with Christian events. But the point I really want to make is, why should everyone pay for events that other people go to these events? Private companies can get publicity like Walmart if they fund these events. Let's have an alternative. In the meantime, you want to tax the internet, tax our homeowners, because the city council can't put a lid on special events, and how about get money from the city council? You pay for these events since you want to pass them so much. Thank you. And the CRA.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perman. Madam Clerk, that item is now before us. If you would open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 37 was called special for Councilmember Hahn.
Yes, item 37, and then we will go to item 38 after that. Ms. Hahn?
Colleagues, I'm asking that we do a 245 today on a decision that the Airport Commission made last week. It involved a change order for the Tom Bradley International Terminal to the tune of $17 million. This project is a long-awaited project. We're modernizing Tom Bradley International Terminal. I think when we started talking about this project, it was about a $400 million project. Then it jumped up to 700 million, and then 800 million. So with this, it's looking to be close to $1 billion. And it's not that I'm against the modernization of Tom Bradley International Terminal. I just think we have a fiduciary duty here to just take a look at the expenditures of the whole master plan modernization effort out at LAX, and I would like to send this to my committee of trade, commerce, and tourism to just vet this extra $17 million, find out what it's going for, why wasn't that part of the original scope of work. And more importantly, colleagues, we still, even with this additional $17 million, we still don't have one new contact gate, which, again, I think is very short-sighted in terms of modernizing Tibbetts. So I ask that we assert jurisdiction. I'd like to take this decision that they just may vet it a little bit, talk about it a little bit, find out what exactly this means, and whether or not it is still beginning to include the possibility of contact gates. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President. Indeed, I completely agree with my colleague, the chair of our Oversight Committee. You know, we're spending $5 billion on five projects. The Bradley Building, the People Mover, the Consolidated Rental, the Midterm Terminal, and the Green Line. All these issues are very significant. We are modernizing LAX. We have jump-started it. They haven't done anything since 1983. We have a concerted, supportive effort with the Westchester community, but the great leadership of Ms. Hahn. We're very happy that Gina Marie Lindsay is here and her creativity, but, colleagues, we need to exert our jurisdiction. We need to look at every one of these issues. Ms. Hahn's right, we don't have those contact gates that we've been talking about. We want to be ready for whatever the future brings in the 21st century. We're very excited how things are moving, but we need to let the Lawa folks know, and especially their Oversight Commission, that we have a major commitment here in the city. In fact, it was Ms. Hahn and I that brought up that midfield terminal to begin with, which had been languishing forever. And many of us know the Green Line has been sitting there since 1994, and should go into that airport yesterday. It's part of our master gridlock transportation regionalism plan. So we also, from my end of the horseshoe here, look forward to an eye vote on this motion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Rice.
Councilmember Hahn, in this discussion that you'll have in your committee, will we get an update as to where they're at with the plan? Are we going to just keep this at a very focused level? I'm just wondering, we're spending $17 million on interior improvements. Does that mean we're going to dismantle it when we expand, or we don't expand? Are we going to have those types of questions? Great. Thank you.
I'd like to talk to the city attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for the record, the last day within which council can act on this matter is next Wednesday because of the recess.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
14 ayes, thank you. Next item.
Item 38 was being held on the desk.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Perry before we go to public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a technical amendment on the advice of the city attorney to insert the words, "Council..." Well, we have to take action on February 20, 2008, to put a date certain in the motion, and that's basically it.
Thank you. I'm going to go to our two public comment speakers out in the valley, Miriam Fogler and Donna Perman.
This should have been a big... These chairs should have been filled up, folks. I don't know why you don't have a public hearing for this. This is going to affect the whole people here, the residents of the San Fernando Valley, and for people who have large lots. I think we're getting the short end of the stick again, you know, like suck it, stick it to the ratepayers, the taxpayers, and give you a bottomless pit to where you can spend as much money as you like, as long as it's not your money. And this system is not very good at all, because you've got a lot of people who are wasting water in the sewage, and you don't even give those meters for free to make sure that people don't waste water, and you want to charge people $200 for that. I think it's an outrage, and also attacking the DWP workers. There are civil service workers, like the city workers, and the police and fire. These guys should all be coming together and uniting and making the city work much more efficiently, and I know they can't, and they can get the pay raises that they should be getting, the pay raises long overdue, and I don't think it's right to be jumping on them for that. Especially Union, the IBW-18, you should be ashamed of yourselves. It's a hutzpah what you did against your members, you know, to sue the Daily News. I think it's very helpful that the city workers and the DWP, fire, and police stick together and help each other with their benefits and everything, medical, everything, because in the private sector, they've been attacking retirement, medical benefits, everything. You saw the auto workers, they were fighting for their benefits and their health and all that, so we've got to be there together and stick together. So for the most part, this is a real rip-off, the water and power thing, that you're placing upon the people without even giving them fair hearings. There should be big hearings of this, of this magnitude, without passing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perman?
Yeah. Sorry, I spoke on this earlier. Anyway, I can't believe all these water and power increases, city and federal employees only get 3% to 4%, yet these increases, I see it, are 3% every year. There goes our money to the DWP, and we try to keep it down, we get socked. We have to keep our houses dark, have to run fans instead of air conditioners. With DWP, gas prices and higher food prices, we are in the minus with our income. It's not fair to have several increases in DWP so close together. You're killing the lower and middle classes with all the necessities, the lives being higher. It's higher than our income. The cost of living is not enough for some who get, and some who get no cost of living increase at all. It's murder. Apparently, you have enough and don't care. DWP managers don't care, and you give extras to large corporations. I agree, you shouldn't go after DWP employees. There are city employees who work hard, just like all the rest of them, who will also be paying this terrible increase. Please don't do this thing with the DWP. I wish all these people would have come down and said that we can't take it anymore. We're tired, and we can't take this anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the...
Madam President, just for clarification, the second recommendation should be amended to have the report back to Energy and Environment, Budget, and Finance in 60 days, and then return to council on February 20, 2008.
That is correct. Okay, that is correct. I should give you the exact written language on that.
Thank you.
Yes, we had both of those testify. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
I just wanted to know, the day I chaired, Mr. Garcetti, we're out before 11:00. I don't know if that beats your record, but anyways. Those will be posted and referred.
And that would clear the desk.
Yes, and announcements. Mr. Weiss.
I have a request for the mayor's office to send item 27 forthwith, please.
That will be 27 forthwith. Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? Do we have adjourning motions? No adjourning motions? Our meeting is now adjourned. Have a good day.